Alright, let's go get set up so we can... Get it. I'm just gonna stand here. Good area. Tired, long day.
Long Monday?
Yeah.
Alright, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Let's all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, the mayor is out today. I'm Steve Pierce. I'm the mayor pro tem, so I'll be presiding over this meeting. Do we have any agenda changes? We're good. Alright, so let's... I'm looking for approval of the minutes of the March 11th meeting. I need a motion? No, I need the motion. And then a second? Okay. Alright, any discussion on it? Alright, all those in favor of approving the minutes from March 11th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Minutes are approved. Okay. We are gonna take a moment before we have the communications from the public. And our city attorney is gonna take a moment to speak, and then we'll begin with that.
Alright, good. I just wanted to... I just wanted to take a couple of minutes. Can y'all hear me through this? Does it come through?
Yep.
Can you guys hear me? Okay, okay, thank you. I just wanted to give a couple of minutes to discuss Martin B. Boisey and some of the legal requirements that the city is facing, that the... Some of the ways that the city's hands are tied, and we get a lot of calls from citizens that are frustrated due to what feels like a lack of understanding of what the rules are, what the law is, and how that constricts our ability to craft laws in the city of Clarkston. So I wanted to talk briefly about Martin B. Boisey. Just the basics of that is that Martin B. Boisey stands for the idea that we cannot criminalize homelessness. And what that means is that when a person is involuntarily homeless, not homeless by choice, but homeless through, for some reason that they can't control, that we cannot criminalize, we can't cite them criminally, we can't overly charge them with fines and fees, we can't jail them if they are sleeping on public property when they don't have another place to go, when that... The other place that they go would be an available shelter space. And there's a whole lot of case law and rules that talk about what available shelter looks like. There's a lot of barriers to shelter spaces that disqualify it from... For being considered available to certain segments of the unhoused population. So when we're looking at crafting laws for the city of Clarkston, we are not able to offer them shelter space. We don't have that available in the city of Clarkston. We don't have shelter space available. So what we have to do then is say, alright, we cannot criminalize folks who are sleeping on public property, but we do have to do what's best for all of the citizens of Clarkston and manage the resources and green spaces and whatnot of the city of Clarkston for all of the citizens to the best of our ability, and that includes the unhoused folks. And it includes the children who play at the parks, folks who want to go to the parks and have picnics. And it includes every single resident of the city of Clarkston. So as we're crafting language in our ordinance says, we have to take into consideration all of those folks. So what we did with our ordinance in 17... or, excuse me, 1706 is to create a... The off-limits areas. These are areas that you cannot camp in. For the most part, there is no camping in the city of Clarkston. We're not... We're a city. We're not a county space. We don't have a lot of campgrounds. It's not... It's a city. So we don't have camping available, and 1706 put that into plain language. There is no camping allowed. We will... We have chosen not to enforce that no camping ordinance, or no camping requirement, against people who are involuntarily unhoused. So we cannot enforce it. That's what our ordinance says. We cannot enforce it against those who are involuntarily unhoused. What we can do is direct where they can be and where they cannot be. It's... I think most people understand that we can set out parameters that say, we can't have people camping out in city hall. I think that's pretty obvious. People understand that. But what we have to do is take into consideration, again, all of the city of Clarkston and all of the residents. And so we have to make sure that we're keeping spaces available for our kids and for everybody else to use our public properties as well. And so we chose Foster Park as the area where the unhoused folks could set up camp. We have put some pretty strict requirements on what they can and cannot do, when they can stay and when they cannot stay. And that is to make sure that we are being responsible for all of the resources that we have to manage as a city and being responsive to all of the needs of the residents. So we did set up those off-limits spaces. We provided Foster Park for now as the one place where camping can happen during specific hours. We did leave some room open to add additional park spaces or public spaces if that became necessary. At this time, it doesn't seem that that is necessary. Our... The number of folks here is kind of dwindled since the camp has been disbanded, so... But we do have... We do have a lot of complaints that come in with regard to how that park is being treated by the folks who are staying there. So we do have to enforce not just the camping ordinance, but other laws. Because just because we can't criminalize someone for sleeping doesn't mean that they have a free pass to commit crimes carte blanche. So we have cited that a lot of these folks for other crimes, including littering and assault. And I have a list. There's dogs at large, there's alcohol in the park, dangerous weapons in the park. And we had a whip at one point that was being brandished by one of the folks down there. We've had warrants that we've arrested folks on that are down there. And then trespassing and public nuisance. So I just want to make it clear that just because they have the ability to camp there does not allow them to commit crimes. And we are looking at that. So I want to make sure that the public is aware and the city council is aware that we... Our hands are somewhat tied by the Ninth Circuit decision in Martin B. Boisey and what we can and cannot do. And... But that doesn't mean that our hands are tied completely with regard to keeping our city safe. I think that our officers are doing a really good job. Take any questions if you have any questions about it.
So Foster Park's the only designated park?
It is at this time. We did leave that open in the ordinance to add additional ones. I think we have it crafted so that the mayor could add additional locations if necessary.
Thank you very much. Alright, so we are gonna move on to communications from the public. Before we do that, someone left a list of questions out on the table out there. If these are questions you're gonna ask during public comment, it isn't a question and answer session. We're not gonna answer them. But if you would like answers to these questions, we can arrange a meeting with the chiefs of police and fire over here, and they can gather this information for you. And we can have that discussion if you want that. So we're gonna move on to public comment. There is no time limit on public comment for the whole span of it, but we're gonna limit everybody to three minutes a person. We want to start with the residents of the city of Clarkston first. And then after we move through them, we allow... We welcome residents of the county or anywhere else in the world to comment. So when you come up to the microphone, please state your name and your address, and we'll begin your three minutes right then. And then I'll give you a... I'm running a timer. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left. And then my beeper will beep, and you'll know when your three minutes are up. Alright.
Thank you. I want to say thank you again for not changing 1706 ordinance. 1706, I appreciate that. I do have a question for the attorney again. It's been about a month since I asked about mutual combat laws and what citizens can do to remove trespassers from their property. So I was just hoping that you can say last meeting, there might be an answer. Again, thank you guys very, very much. I appreciate it.
You said that there were specific laws and rules that still applied despite the fact that, you know, you have to allow under law camping on public property. In reading the ordinance, basically it says camping is allowed from nine o'clock to seven o'clock, which in my reading of the ordinance says that by seven o'clock, the park has to be vacated, caved in camping. Is that correct?
Well, at the beginning of the answer, I apologize if you just...
Okay, well, the park is not camped and vacated by seven o'clock. In fact, I drove by there again today just before noon, and it was... Set up all over the park. Undetended belongings sat all over the park. So if we're gonna have an ordinance, I think probably we should enforce the ordinance. Now, granted, I understand that, you know, we have to provide a place for these people to camp, but the ordinance says no camping past seven o'clock. So let's enforce the laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. After the meeting, if you would like to have an answer to your question, if it doesn't come up during council comments. I know Chief Hastings has been...
Meeting afterwards.
Meeting afterwards and talking with people. Would anyone else like to speak during public comment?
In your first... In your statement, you said involuntarily homeless. They are there voluntarily because they spend their money on drugs instead of shelter and bases. It's voluntary, most of them. Thank you.
From my house, from my backyard, and they have been... There's dogs. They've been doing drugs, fireworks. There's all kinds of chaos up there. The cops are there all the time. On Friday, there were five camp spots. Now there's 10, 12 because the church across the street is feeding them again now. And I want to know what the laws are. It's not a restaurant, it's a church. And he's feeding them now, and they just congregate, and then they all hang around and go across to the park. They're destroying our park. There's no kids able to play in the park. People don't even... Can't even walk by there anymore. People's kids don't play in their yard anymore because they've been harassed. And I just... You guys have got to figure out how to fix this. I mean, I feel for them. I know they have to eat. But like the lady said, this is a life choice.
Yes.
This is the choice they have made for themselves. They lay around all day. I don't see any of them getting up, going looking for a job. Or, I mean, there was one half-naked sunbathing the other day when the sun was out. So I mean, you know, get a life. I've had to support myself, my kids, my family, my dogs. Let's get a life, people. And you guys have got to get it straightened out because I've had it.
Thanks, Mr. Sager.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to express some of the stresses of living next to Foster Park with these individuals there currently. In the evening times, we've had individuals going up and down the street yelling explicatives in the evening, the late evening. And so it makes it kind of hard to be in the neighborhood with these individuals being there because they don't bring any community betterment. Again, I can witness to what the other person said. These individuals, they do lay around. They don't treat the better themselves. And overall, they're not... In addition to the community, they're a burden. And so it's kind of just hard to be in that area. Anyway, I just wanted to express that through the city council, which you know that that's a hard part.
I'm a pastor here in town, and our church owns the property right across the street from Foster at 902... I love it. So we have multiple occurrences of bathroom usage on our property and those kind of things. I'm gonna chime in and say I concur with everything that's already been said. Yeah, it's a nuisance. It's definitely not our favorite thing to deal with. There are many cars that we're having to pay to get removed from the property. Our property is the one that the city's recycle container sits on, so... That's a good investment. Actually, I like that the recycle container is there because guess what? A lot of people that are responsible, that like to recycle, also keep an eye on the property and the park and those kind of things, too. On the flip side, I want to say thank you for all you're doing to help take care of the issue. A year ago, you weren't dealing with this. Good job. I know you're trying. I know your hands are tied. So whatever we can do to help, we definitely would like to chime in and do something, too. On the church side of things, we're doing our best to love the people, so because we're kind of caught in that way, too. We want to care for the people. They're human. On the other side, they're disgustingly dirty. On the other side, they're... They're pooping on church properties, and they're leaving... We've done evils and we've done several things, too. So when we have children present, we make sure they sweep the property because we know what we've done the right in the past. So one side of it, I understand very much so. On the other side, I just want to say thanks for... Hardly this... You're doing your thing to do your best. I know that you love your city, too. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am not from the city, though. Can you come on up?
Yeah, I think it's...
It's okay, man?
There doesn't seem to be an abundance of people rushing to the mic at this point. I think it's okay.
I grew up... I was raised here in Clarkston. I graduated from high school. I still have very many family members that live in Clarkston and the Assom County area. And I have two children, grandchildren, that attend Holy Family School. So I have some skin in this situation. I picked up my grandchildren the other day. They are not allowed to play on the lower half of the playground anymore because they can see the homeless people in Foster Park and their activities. Plus, some of the homeless people have come up to the fence line and talked to the children there. So last Thursday, there were at least two calls, I believe, to Foster Park, and the children there saw what was going on. Now, we talk about how the homeless, you know, I understand because Washington is such a liberal state, that they are putting the homeless above the taxpaying citizens. There has to come a point where we need to put teeth in the ordinances and laws that we have. And that includes that if they are vandalizing, if they are doing drugs, they need to be held accountable. Now, I understand... So by the way, if you're wanting to know who put out that list of questions, that was me. Because not only are we just talking about... We're not talking about people can't be there. We're living there. They're not paying property taxes there. They're not paying self-tax on things. They are not contributing positively to our community. Now, with the drugs, what is very scary is that we do not know how these people behave when they are taking drugs. And they are around homes, and they are around a school. They're not supposed to be able to do drugs within a thousand feet of a school. They're not even supposed to be doing them in a park. Who's gonna be the sacrificial lamb? Are we gonna be able to point that to a child that is walking home from school? Let's let him be the one that's gonna finally set people on fire to get something done here. I'm tired of feeling like we have to be responsible for these people and their choices. I take care of myself. I take care of my children. I take care of my grandchildren. We are doing what we're supposed to be doing. We're law-abiding. We pay our taxes, and we follow the rules.
30 seconds.
So what I'm asking is if you can't do what we can as much... But think outside of the box of dealing with these people. We need to make their lives difficult because no one's gonna change until they're uncomfortable. So if they're cold and they don't like it, they're gonna make it life choice. If they're hungry and they're not being fed, they're going to make a life choice.
Yes.
So we need to start making things more difficult for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
And I'm here on behalf of the homeless. I actually started handing out blessing bags through our church about a month ago. And after that, I started... When the new group came, which some of them are back here, Cowboy and them. When they come... This group is actually quiet. There is people... The original group that is there right now is actually quiet. Once in a while, they get the people that come through the park, and there's more problems when they do come in. But I have sat there every day for the last few weeks, and I have watched these people. They all have... They're all humans. They all have a name. A lot of them have a lot of mental stuff that they cannot even work with. People are losing their homes left and right. You know, medical people... I'm a medical person. I had to stop working in 2015. So I know what these guys are going through. The mental, I'm a childhood survivor, and it's destroyed my life. So I can stand here and understand how these guys feel to be judged. People drive by that park constantly, harassing them day and night. All day, all night. They drive up... I witnessed them drive up and down the road, honking their horn nonstop, yelling and screaming. I've got videos of them, people just screaming out there, calling them trash. Nobody has ever stopped to ask them one name. Nobody has asked them, "Okay, how'd you get on the street?" "Hey, how can I help you?" I talked to one of the guys yesterday, 28 years old. He's been down on bad luck. I asked him, "What can I do to help you?" He wants to go to college. So you know what? He wants to better himself. I'm gonna be there, and I'm gonna help you. These guys are constantly harassed. They're yelling, screaming, acting like they're trash. Nobody ever asks them, "How do you end up on the street?" Look at the housing right now. There's more and more families on the street, but we're gonna call them trash because they're on the street? Nobody knows what these guys are going through. I have witnessed it. One of my guys is schizophrenic. All the time, he's telling me, "Stay away." So I stay away. The other day, I come home from Spokane, and he was right there. "Can I have a hug?" To me, that was the biggest win ever, the friendship I've made with these people. The man across the street the other morning went after our volunteer thinking she was homeless. Seven o'clock in the morning, yelling at the people in the park. He's going to kill them in their sleep. Kill them in their sleep. This is the stuff they are dealing with. All they are is sitting there being quiet. Once in a while, the ones that are all high come through. But this group, if I could not feel... Oh, I'm sorry.
That's alright.
I think I got my point, though.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Actually, I had one more thing if I could. A lot of people have been mentioning... I think we need a clarification on forced homelessness and voluntary homelessness. And, you know, if there's people that are involuntary homeless, then that is an issue, and they do need help. And if they do the things to get the help, they get the help. So I'm under the understanding that the Supreme Court is going to be making or talking about, is the determination between forced homelessness and voluntary homelessness going to be determined? And then can we start enforcing some ordinances? Thank you.
Thanks.
The mic is open for a couple more seconds. Alright. Not seen...
I'm very familiar... This is Chris Alexander. I'm very familiar with people who do drugs, and they have a choice. Most of them get... There are a lot of them that get disability that are able to work, at least some. And they've chosen to be homeless instead of pay rent. They've chosen this lifestyle. They don't want... They don't want the responsibilities. They just don't. I've had them tell me that. And as far as being judgmental, everybody in this room and everybody in that park are judgmental to a certain degree. That's not what the problem is. They're probably more judgmental because of their guilty consciences. more judgmental because of their guilty consciences, of spending all, there was a couple down there that got $2,600 a month, $1,300 each in disability checks, and they spent it all in drugs in the first week every month. That's just one of them. This, why can't you take them to the edge of town at 7:00 AM and tell them, we'll bring you back at 9:00 PM, but not until...
Thanks, Chris.
I would like to thank you guys for everything that you guys have been doing with the homeless. But I think I'd like to kind of give a reminder of the fact that just because you're homeless does not mean that you're on drugs and that you're spending every single penny you have on drugs. I think a lot of people really are kind of liking the fact that even if you are homeless, it's really difficult to get back on your feet. You know, it's like people are like, oh, go get a job and everything. But it's, how are you supposed to get to that job every single day? How are you supposed to better yourself if you don't have a ton of resources to better yourself? You know, I understand homelessness is a problem, especially for business owners and, you know, people living near those areas and stuff. And I, I feel for those people, definitely. But I think we need to remember that we should, we shouldn't just see someone who's homeless and just go, oh, well, they're obviously on the country roads, or something like that. Definitely just being aware of what people are going through and everything. And I think trying to give them kindness, I think is a very good thing.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so I think now we're, I feel safe to move on from public comment. Thank you all for coming up and speaking. I appreciate it. So, we are going to go on to anything from the mayor. I think I've said anything that I need to say as mayor. Is there anything that we, I've got outside organizations to speak of at the appropriate time. But otherwise, we're going to move on to, is there anything from staff or employees? Gentlemen?
Let me clarify, I didn't, I didn't mention this earlier, but I wanted to say that the Supreme Court is addressing the camping, the camping cases. It's specifically the Grants Pass cases, but they are going to be looking at some of these questions. I think the question that Jesse asked about forced or voluntary, I think, I think that may be something that is addressed in that. I can't be certain. But they are going to be looking at that. And so, I'm hoping, we're all hopeful that they will give us some clarity on how, on how much control we have over, over creating these ordinances and enforcing them in the future. So, that'll be coming, they're, they're going to start looking at that on April 22nd. So, just, just a month from now. So, hopefully about a month from, from that, we'll get some kind of an answer. I, we'll keep on top of that one. The other part is that as we're citing people, there's a lot of these misdemeanor charges that we're, that we're citing people for. And those are not being accepted by the jail at this time. We just don't have a lot of jail space. But just wanted to remind everybody that there is, the new jail is being built. So, hopefully by this time next year, or sooner really, we should be able to have more space and be able to have some, some additional tools in our tool belt on how to, how to deal with this. So, we are looking forward to, to that. I also wanted to, to mention that, that when, when they're breaking down camps, our officers have some discretion in how they, and how, and when they enforce that. So, as people are getting, getting packed up and moving out, breaking their tents down, officers are there every day and working, working with them and trying to get that smoother process happening. But we cannot ask, we cannot require that they leave the park or leave public property. They just can't be camped there. But every single person who is, who is homeless, it has a legal right to, to exist in our city. Just because, just because they have to break their camp down doesn't mean that we can drive them to the edge of town and drop them off. They, they have a right to exist in the, in our town. So, I just want to be, be clear on that part.
Second. Any other staff, employee? Okay. We are going to move on to committee reports. So, we have finance admin, and we're going to have, we're going to have our bills read to us.
The total expenditures for the March 25th, 2024 period of $271,987.64 and the 2024 February end of month period of $371.75.
All right. So, we're going to look for a motion to pay our bills, if I could get that.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to pay the bills. Any discussion? All right, they're being done. All those in favor of paying the bills, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, bills are paid. Let's see, our public safety minutes and public works minutes should be in your package. For outside organizations, I have one. We went to Public Health today. And Public Health had the, the porta potties removed. They, they want, we want to try it one more time. The Health District is going to buy their own porta potties, have them serviced. And if they are abused and damaged, they will be condemned and properly disposed of. So, they're going to, they're, they're going to try to get that up one more time. Or at least a series of just buying their own porta potties and throwing them away when needed. That is my outside organization. I don't know if anyone else has anything. All right, doesn't look like it. We have no unfinished business. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a really quick way to pass uncontroversial things all in one fell swoop. So, we're going to, I'm going to look for a motion to pass the consent agenda. We have a motion in a second. Is there, it's not going to be any discussion. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Consent agenda approved. We have no new business. I would like to move on to council comments.
I want to address Jennifer. As far as Foster Park goes, when I, I went to Holy Family also, one through eight grades. And we used to have recess down there. And I think there's also a, a preschool that they had down there. And they would also have their recess in Foster Park. And, you know, I just hope the Supreme Court rules in the right way for the city of Clarkston and that we can go back to having a safe park down there again. And as far as the library resources, oh, sorry, not resources, the young lady wanted to know, there's no resources here? The library, as far as applying for jobs and things like that, you can go to our local library and they will help you get online and apply for jobs. I mean, that's, so there, there is a resource that way.
Rural Resources will also assist with that.
And I always thank everybody for having the courage to stand up and to speak. Whatever side of the issue you're on, your voice matters. And everybody has a different lens to which they see an issue based on their history, background, and the perspective that they bring to the table. So, it's important to hear all sides. And we are trying to do the very best we can. And that's, that's, that's it. So, thank you.
I just want to say thank you to Jesse, Evie, Michael, David, Jennifer, Denise. I love hearing public comments. One of my favorite things to do. Whether I agree with it or not, I love hearing it. It lets me know where, where the public stands. With that, Jesse, let me know about the mutual combat thing. I know Phoenix Jones, I believe it was named the superhero from Seattle. He made a career off that for, for some time. So, there is something out there. I also want to say tweakers suck. And I hope there's no sacrificial lambs. I also know, I also feel your frustrations. I deal with a tweaker by my place by Arnold Park as well. There are, there are a few good people. They are. I've seen them. I've seen Sam, Samantha with them. I've seen what she does. I respect, I absolutely respect what she does. You have to have a heart to do what she has to do. I love helping people as well. Like I, like I honestly say all the time, is I'm a wrestling coach. I love, I love helping with kids, teaching them, show them the right way through life. And she's doing it with, with the, with the adults. So, I do respect absolutely what she does. It's hard work. It's not easy. With that being said, just like wrestling and sports, there's always going to be a bad apple. There's always going to be the one bad apple. Right now, the, there's a lot of bad apples in the, coming from the park. We, we got plenty of complaints. We had the one gentleman that came here last time. He talked about his dog getting held to rocks and, and he had, him have to go to, you know, had to throw some fisticuffs the last time. I mean, I mean, I got tweakers by, coming by my house. I got my, my six-year-old asking, Dad, what's wrong with him? And I, I chuckled a little bit. I explained, that's what drugs do, Noah. That's what drugs do. You don't do drugs. That's a good example of why you don't walk all like a zombie and start pointing at the sky and saying obscenities and stuff like that. So, I deal, so I deal with it all the time. I got to deal with it. I got them on my property. Good thing my neighbors see him and chase him off out of my, back my trailer. But there are good people in the bunch. But there's also just a lot of bad apples ruining the bunch. Does that give us the right to drive by Foster Park and start yelling things at them? No, no. I will, I don't condone that at all. I went through, I was there last, last Tuesday when one girl, Ricky, was arrested. Yeah, she was all strung out and she was doing her thing. She freaked out. And I mean, if I'm going over there and visit Foster Park like it should be, what some people are saying we should be doing. You know what? I really don't like being around strung out people. I'm fine. I got stuff to do. But I'm with you. I feel you. And we'll wait for, let's see what happens with Martin versus Boise, or Grants Pass versus Johnson. Thank you.
Before I forget, I did want to welcome Ed Coffman, our Public Works Director, to the, to the meeting. You've been on Zoom the last several, a couple of months. And it's nice to see you here in person. And we're really glad to have you on the team and have you leading the Public Works Department. So, welcome.
I've gotten a lot of questions and, and Brian Temple brought it up too. And maybe Joel, you can speak to this. As far as what the officers are doing as far as personal property being left at Foster Park during the day?
I'd be happy to discuss that.
Yeah.
Everyone satisfied? All right, there being no further business in front of this body, I declare this meeting adjourned.
You know what?
Figure out that law, just let me know so I can watch.
I already figured out that two opposing neighbors, as long as you want to get in trouble if your two opposing neighbors call you like this or anything.
I know that in order to, one, before I ran, because I, because I was living in Seattle and that, but now, yeah, so like, like it was like, you have to get a police officer, that's amazing. Signing that, well, I was listening to that. I think I feel that the culture of the world is open. I feel bad. Retired, retired, you're retired, always chill, relax. And these are these bussing people. Fractures, aches.
My, my introduction.
What's your, what's your thought?
My name is, hey, Jason, you want to invite me to mutual combat? Okay, you're on time. Now, I was under the impression that you have, as long as it's in there, you can say the words, then anything you can say, you can go from there. You have to have, I didn't think you had to have a class present, but I think that you have a class present. There are two opposing neighbors who might be in trouble for a dispute. So, as long as you're two opposing neighbors on either side of you, you don't have a problem with it. And don't call you in particular case. And you don't have a problem. And the worst thing that could happen is manslaughter. I think it's the second one manslaughter. So, you won't get murdered. I'm just saying, it's in wording. Well, it's when they're on our property. Like, you type in a shit. Well, what if they have all their crap on you? That's originally the start of that situation. You have all of this homeless crap on your yard. I'm like, dude, what are you doing? Like, get out of my way. I didn't argue with me. That was the original thing, was just, it's got on my property. The original to all of this was, all of them are either...
Why does this reach our front door?
Anything you wanted, friends and anybody. So, that's, that's what I'm getting. Very big to go, work the campus. And I, I would be, bother. Because I get $50, take it from smoking in the public. So, why don't they? You know? What the heck? Like, what ordinances are being picked on and not? And if you want citizens? So, if you want citizens, like, I'm down. I know a lot of my friends are down. I know that there's some militia rules and some odds and adds, you know?
Even three people. Those guys are low. They got problems.
I follow these guys in Boise once. That's actually a fight I worked against in the service.
I was going to say, mutual combat is, is kind of not there.
So, it's not, so if we say get off our property and they don't?
Then you don't lose.
Mutual combat is, you're saying, you want to fight? And then you get turned out. And then even the, then the police officer is sanctioned referee.
Thank you. You can't freaking bust somebody in the face and drag them off the property. You can't remove them physically from your property. Shooting in your face if they enter your house, but you can't like, there's one from your party.
The laws are from the thing? I would not, I would not.
Okay.
But as far as, I mean, somebody is on your property, yes, you are, you don't have, you don't have a duty to retrieve.
That's it. I have to stand my ground.
It's not quite the same, like the law, not, it's, standing grounds, like it's a big kind of, my analogy with the health values, you don't have to try to leave and get out of it. So, you can stay there and say, no, stop. So, there's, it's a little bit different. Some of it's... Grants Pass. Grants Pass is...
So, I had this issue.
Yeah, but in some ways, it kind of just made it. So, so, I don't, on campus or other states, and it says, you're really, really taking, we are... I'm telling us we have to allow the grave. You're saying, we can't, this is the law that we come with because we know our state, we know our city better than you do. And we've made this decision. This is the law that allows us all, say, right on the ground. You're trying to, now, and so they kind of found some breathing, they're in there. So, that's kind of, so, they've been probably a hundred and a half.
Was it three fifty or five?
Definitely a lot of them, but they're...
Another question, a personal question to be open. So, last Tuesday, whatever, they said I have another question, a personal question, so, last Tuesday or whatever, they sent down for some reason, I've never heard, yeah, that's, 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 I have, I have, I have, I have, I have, not in Washington, 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 they're sitting there working, having children, grandmas, and, and, so, 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 so,
there's a special, so, 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 well, you're not, you're not a, yeah, I mean, you're articulate, and, 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 and,
Nice to meet you, are you doing documentary? Or are you just curious? You like journalism?
I like it, no, good. I wanna get, see his, so, we are gonna start doing some, um, we started a business, what's your name? We're gonna start doing videos and things, and do you have other equipment?
Um, you know, this is my actual old cell phone, um, that I, that I kept, it was recording, um, and then I've got a body cam, stuff like that, but, um, I just bought that at Walmart for like $6.88, and it was a stand, just for.
That would be really, and stuff like that.
Yeah, six, seven, or six eighty-eight, but, um, yeah, this is only my second time using it, I'm just trying to get used to it myself.
Yeah, nice.
It's only my, yeah, yeah, free press.
Yeah, that's right, good, good.
The ultimate in free press, yeah.
Years ago.
Uh, no, I just, I'm playing it again, yeah, I just, I'm intrigued by it, so they don't, they don't put theirs, theirs online, so I thought, well, shoot, why not, you know, I'll record it, and I'll, 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 so, 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 so,